We will bring this meeting to order. Time is at seven oh one on July seventh and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Givana, can you put up the flag?
I'd be happy to, Chair Home.
Okay. A pledge of allegiance. Okay. With that, we will do a roll call. Givana, can you do the roll call?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Commissioner Fields?
Present.
Commissioner Halt?
Here.
Commissioner Massey?
Present.
Commissioner Wallnick?
Here.
Chair Home?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, and with that, we can move on to the ceremonial and the welcoming of our newest commissioner. Sir Field, hello, welcome to the best commission and the city has to offer. If you'd like to say hello and a few words, take it away.
Thank you very much. Chair Home, I really appreciate your warm welcome. Very happy to be here on this commission. I've made San Mateo my home since 2016 and a big fan of the parks, especially in the last year and a half or so. I live in 19th Avenue Park and enjoy a small park next to me in Conquer Park and in my daytime life, I work for a Jewish education organization called the Shaw Apartment Institute. I also have a background in urban planning and worked for the state of California and the city of New York. And I look forward to getting to know all of you and work to contribute to the city of San Mateo.
Great, well, welcome.
Also, just sorry, I'll also just add, I played tennis a bit as a child and relearned tennis through the recreation department here in San Mateo.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
So when we tackle the Central Park tennis courts began, you will be our in-house representative.
That's exactly right.
Yes. Well, welcome to the commission. I think you'll enjoy your time here on the Parks and Recreation Commission. We start the meeting for the public with our announcements related to Zoom, which is due to the physical distancing protocols that place in this time, we continue to encourage public participation remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the top and bottom of the published agenda. There are two ways to participate. You can join this Zoom meeting by clicking on the link to stop the agenda. Use the raise your hand button to be called on at the appropriate time. Please unmute yourself only when called upon. If you're dialing in by phone, the participation code can be done by calling four oh eight six three eight zero nine six eight and the conference ID of eight three two four one seven seven two five seven five, eight three two four one seven seven two five seven five with a passcode of six two zero nine four one. And if you are on the phone and want to speak, you press star nine to raise your hand and you'll be called upon and then star six to unmute. The options for public comment will remain available until we close the public comment period for the specific items. And first item we have is approval of minutes. I didn't see the minutes in the packet. Did I miss them? Does anyone else have them?
Yeah, I did.
You did, so I just completely missed them. So I was looking back for them tonight, too. Okay, well, apart from me, does anyone else have any comments on the minutes?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second, yeah, I'll second.
Givana, do you want to do a roll call approval?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Commissioner Massey?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallnick?
Aye.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Halt?
Aye.
Chair Home?
Aye.
Thank you.
And so at this time, we will open up to public comment for items that are not on the agenda. We, this is a reminder that tonight, we will be looking at the development fee, development fee impact study for the park in lieu and impact fees. If you have a comment related to that, hold your, raising of the hand, hold your comments until we come to that item. So this item, this period is for comments that are not on the agenda. I see one hand raised for Mission Merchants. Would you like to unmute yourself?
Hey there, this is Ryan Motzick. Sorry, that's, I'm using an account that's associated with an organization that I work with. But hi, first off, Commissioner Fields, welcome to the commission. I think you're going to do a fine job. But my name's Ryan Motzick. I'm the co-owner of Atlas, which is a skateboard store in downtown San Mateo. I've worked in San Mateo since the late 90s and served on the the board of the Downtown San Mateo Association as the vice president as well as the, as the chair of the Downtown Arts Committee. I've spoken with all of you and I'm sure you're familiar with my, my voice and name, but I just wanted to first off, just thank you so much for hearing the skateboard community out and taking serious that some of the parks need some to be addressed. The Bearsford and Shoreview Park could use some improvements and I'm glad that there's attention put towards that. I would ask that there could be some sort of listening session or getting the community involved in what repairs could happen or improvements could happen. And I would also like to put a focus that the skate park that we're, you know, a future, more modern contemporary skate park or what we like to call a skate space, I would still like to put focus that that is definitely a need. And while getting the parks, you know, up kept is great, I do want to not lose the attention to the matter that there does need to be a modern skate park in San Mateo. And I also want to correct a statement that was made at the last the last session, there was talks of the, I think it was the 42nd Ave temporary park and how I think one of the commissioners asked what the story was, or I forget if it was someone that called in. And it was, there was a statement that that park existed for X amount of years as a temporary park until a permanent park was built. And as soon as the permanent park was built, then that park was, the temporary park was removed. And that just wasn't the case. The temporary park was removed prematurely or as scheduled, I don't know. But the skate community was left without a park for several years. And I just want to also point out that there was another statement that was made that, you know, they're glad that all of a sudden there's this need from the skate community and that they're finally hearing from us or just started hearing from us. But there has been outreach for several, several years. And I think that the frustrating part, and don't take this the wrong way, but there isn't much direction on how the community can be heard and it's not that easy on knowing where to go and how to to voice these concerns. I think for some, it might be easier than others. But I think unanimously from the skateboarding community, it's been really, really difficult. But I do want to say thank you for now hearing us and I'm glad that we're having this conversation and thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Next, we will have Michael Manadis.
Hi there, yes, I am Michael Manadis. I've called in a few times and have been present on these Zoom meetings, too. I'm also calling to lobby on behalf of the skateboard community. I run the skateboard instruction program through the city of San Mateo's Parks and Rec Department at Bearsford and have been doing so for about 14 years. It's been a successful program, many, many kids. I taught as little eight and nine-year-olds and then 10 years later, we hired them as employees at Atlas and they're still skateboarding. And it's been a really positive thing in their lives as it has in mine. But I want to repeat what I brought up last time and that yes, we're very happy that you're hearing us and considering doing some improvements to these parks that are very dated and kind of decrepit at this point. But all the other cities around us are building modern parks and San Mateo should be ashamed that we're not keeping up. It is what the youth are doing nowadays. And plenty of kids that live in San Mateo are driving to other towns, spending their money there, just to skate better terrain. So please hear us out that there is need for a modern, state-of-the-art park. And we would want to have a lot of say into it because we do feel like we represent the skate community.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have caller, their phone ends in seven three six. And as a reminder, you press star six to unmute.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tony. And I'm a part of the international and national skateboard community. And I've been part of several projects, not only in San Mateo, but all over the United States. As a nonprofit, building houses, skate parks and all that. And I'm over here just to highly recommend you guys actually push around and push this forward. We need a skate park that is up standard to the skateboarding right now. What it is, is like skateboarding evolves. And what we have, it's not up to standards. Like to actually make it simple, it's like, see, I'm going to play golf in a mini course and then try to compete with someone who's been playing golf in a regular course. That's how we feel. And then as Mike said, everybody's just going elsewhere to be capable to do that, to be capable of training, to be able to skate better. And with the upcoming of the Olympics, it's just, I think it's not only the right move, but the only move is to push this forward. And I like the idea that they're saying to try to upgrade some of the parks. But we're talking about something, not only that, but something new that can actually build some tweaks and be capable of to provide not only the city, but ourselves with something better. And I'd like to thank you all for your time and just to keep that in mind, it's been due like since the since the last park you guys built it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Next, we will have Patrick Beddelen.
Yeah. Greetings, Commissioners, Patrick here. I was actually at the Shoreview Skate Park today and had a great time with some friends. Wanted to reiterate what Tony, the last caller, just said. We need more than just the Shoreview and Bearsford Skate Park. I've said that the last time I called. With some funds and some land, I think the local skateboard community could, could really do a lot and do a lot for the San Mateo community and the greater Bay Area community. So just would love to see that move forward and thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Patrick. Next, we have Sienna Bo Yang.
Hi, thank you so much for setting aside some time for letting us talk about what skating means to us and why skateboards and skate parks are really important to the community. I live in downtown San Mateo and to be honest, I came from Daly City, San Francisco area. And a big part of why I was interested in moving down here is because of all the friends I've made from skating. And yeah, I think like to what Mike was saying, like the skate parks here in San Mateo definitely are not on the same level as some of the other cities in the area. And so it'd be great to see either just maintenance or like new types of skate parks in this area. Not only just to have parks available, but just because the skating community is really open to a lot of different types of people. And I feel like for me, I've only been skating for maybe four years, but all my friends now I've met through skating. And I've met great people and like honestly, a lot of my life has now been revolved around people I've met through skating, not just friends, but like from work or they've been able to connect me in different ways outside of just skating. So having great skate parks makes people come together more and because of that, yeah, great community and great friendships can be made from that.
Thank you, Sienna. Next, we have Andy Carceras.
Hey there, this is Andy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I've lived in San Mateo since 1990. I've been skateboarding since 1995 when I was 10. I've been hearing talks of skate parks since I was a kid. In San Mateo, I've yet to see what is promised. You know, we were told we were going to have a regular park. It was a temporary one, a 42nd, I think some people have touched on this. We got two plazas that were also not what we were promised. Those weren't really up to par according to the skate community in San Mateo. It just seems like we've kind of gotten like the runaround sue. I'll be honest, I've lost hope with the city of San Mateo. I'm an old man now, so I'm hoping that the park will be here for the youth. And then I hope San Mateo will help support something that I feel is very important. And it feels like we're really falling behind. I think someone already mentioned it, the Olympics, skateboarding is already part of it. It's picking up all over the world. I unfortunately had to travel to other cities around the Bay Area to go skate skate parks because San Mateo wouldn't provide. So I'm hoping that you guys will stick to your word and that the kids in the future will get a park to enjoy. So I'm doing it for them, but I'll believe it when I see it. Thanks for hearing us out.
Thank you, Andy. Next, we have Daniel Palarka.
Hi guys, I'm Daniel. I'm a 20-year-old skateboarder from like the Hillsdale area in Bearsford, it's my local park. It's been kind of a trash park like since I was a kid and there's like not a lot of space for like younger kids and older kids to kind of like hang out amongst themselves without like there being like too much crowded room or like just like people being uncomfortable. So yeah, I think renovation on a park would be good, but also a new park would be also amazing not to beat a dead horse. But yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Daniel. And next, we have Jenner Vio.
Hello? Uh, yeah, I'm Jenner, I'm also a 20-year-old skateboarder. I'm currently at the Shoreview Park. And there's like, not a lot I could say that's positive about this park other than I just grew up here and it's like very nostalgic for me to skate here. But right now, there's like a bunch of kids and as a bit more of an experienced skater, it's kind of difficult to fully enjoy the park when I'm like having to worry about these kids. And there's also like a lot of loud music. And it's, it's difficult to like concentrate on just anything that I want to do here. As others have voiced before me, a new park would be ideal. And renovations are also like something to look forward to. But that new park is something that I think would motivate more people to just kind of come together and rally around. But thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you very much. And one clarification, we'll cover some of this at the end of the meeting. But I don't know if, if all of you, I'd like to say thank you to all of the public that's called in that continues to come to our meetings and express support for skate parks. It's really vital to have you come and participate and voice your opinion. And so I'd like to reiterate that we appreciate that. Sheila, if you could just give a real quick comment on, we have Sarah as a new commissioner. Lindsay is a commissioner for the past year. We've talked about maybe doing an update to information special to the capital improvement plan for Parks and Rec. Is that something that we're going to do in the coming months? That would be informative for many of the callers that have called in.
So as part of the proposed five-year capital improvement program, we did budget $400,000 in fiscal year 2223 for the update of skate parks, both at Shoreview and at Bearsford. And we did indicate that at the same time that we would be working to resurface them that where there was possibilities of adding additional features, we certainly wanted to do that. So that capital improvement program was approved by this commission, it was approved by the city council. And so that will be on our work plan for fiscal year 2223, assuming there is sufficient park in lieu money to pay for those improvements.
I actually
Just like all the other improvements.
Yeah, I actually meant the more strategic plan, the big, the grand vision plan.
So the, the plan that we've been working on for our recreation facilities strategic plan is really about our buildings. It's not about park amenities. So as you all, many of you know, all of our community centers and our two pools, with the exception of the senior center, are between 50 and 60 years old. And so we started that process a number of years ago to try and come up with a long-term plan to either replace those facilities or improve them so that we can continue to provide programming for the, for the community. So the recreation facility strategic plan does not include park amenities. It's really focused on our buildings and our two pools.
Okay, thank you. I had, I had forgotten that distinction, but I do think that that's important. We are going to do an update of that sometime in the near future, though, correct?
Yes, within the next couple of months.
Okay, I do think that's important because it does put a framework or a context around many of the various competing needs for upgrades and facilities in the, in the city. So I will encourage all of our callers to keep an eye out to just see that and make sure you learn and attend when we are talking about that. It helps put a framework to the big picture of the city as it relates to park facilities and the challenges therein. We, Ryan, I see you put your hand up. I, we can't take further comments because we closed comments. But I will encourage you to either email us or we'll see you next month for that. Or if you have a comment related to our park and loop fee, later you can hang on and address it there. So with that, we will move to new business, which is, I guess it's old business, which is the development impact fee study. And I will turn it over to you, Sheila.
Great, thank you, Chair Home and members of the commission. I want to introduce Brian Alexander, the senior management analyst with the Community Development Department. Brian has been heading this entire effort over the past year at least to look at all the city's impact fees. I would say that it's been a daunting project with, with Brian working with the Matrix Consulting Group. We did, he did take a presentation to the city council as in a study session back in June. And included on that were some recommended changes to our park in lieu and park impact fees. And so the council has not made any decision on those yet. And so before they do, we wanted to take the opportunity to bring the topic back to the Park and Recreation Commission for your review and comment. So with that, I will turn it over to Brian.
Great, thank you, Sheila. So good evening, Chair Home and members of the Park and Recreation Commission. As Sheila mentioned, my name is Brian Alexander and I'm a senior management analyst in the Community Development Department. And so this item before you this evening is a presentation of the findings of our development impact and in loop fee studies that staff and consultants have conducted over the past year. While the studies included several impact and in loop fees, in this presentation, I'll be focusing on particular on those that are parks related. So as you may know, in fiscal year 1920 and 2021, council included an update of the city's development impact fees as one of the goals in its strategic plan. And this review of the impact and in loop fees was part of a broader examination of several fees across the city that has been conducted over the past year, that Sheila mentioned. This began with an update of our cost allocation plan, which was then followed by a study of our development-related user fees and community developments, which we presented to council back in February. And then tonight's presentation is a component of the third stage of this process, as noted in this slide. As indicated here, staff and consultants took the findings of this report to city council at the June 7th meeting, seeking guidance on a number of different topics. And then at this point, we are in the process of responding to that guidance, which I'll run through later in the presentation and are presenting these findings to you tonight for your comment and feedback as well. So as a part of this process, we made an effort to conduct as comprehensive a review as possible with regard to our fees. We looked at impact and in loop fees across community development, public works, parks and recreation. This slide shows you which fees are part of this review. And then there are also three fees that were not formally studied as part of the process, mostly because they were recently updated. But we accounted for them in the study to evaluate the full fee burden on a given project and for comparison purposes when looking at other jurisdictions. Oh, skip one. So before we go any further, I just want to run through some of the methodology and legal requirements associated with the impact fee revision. First, impact fees are slightly different from user fees and that they can only be used to fund infrastructure and capital-related costs. As a result, no operating costs can be funded through impact fees. When we are evaluating impact fees, we're really looking at different growth projections utilizing a level of standard methodology, which means we are trying to determine what the infrastructure needs are to maintain San Mateo's existing level of standard and service for its key service areas, which in this case would be the parkland, parkland and parks infrastructure in the city. When we looked at city growth, our consultants utilized regional growth projections from the Association of Bay Area Governments or A-BAG, as well as the city's own master plans or capital project plans. We also looked at the type of developments. So for residential projects, we utilize dwelling units to determine future impacts to the city, whereas non-residential project impacts are based on the square footage of those projects. And that's a very important component of ensuring that the nexus is relatable and proportionate to the type of development in question. And then lastly, staff and consultants looked at creating an administrative fee. So per the mitigation fee act, you're allowed to recover administrative costs associated with the impact fee reporting requirements. So we wanted to make sure through this process, we're calculating the legally justifiable maximum fee. So then in terms of what the legal requirements are, impact fees are governed by AB 1600 and the mitigation fee act, which requires that all impact fees must meet these five criteria here on the slide. The first one is the most important one and that is the purpose or why the fee is being collected. So there has to be a clear purpose for the fee. Second, you have to basically lay out how the revenue will be utilized. Again, very important to note that the revenue can only be used for capital and infrastructure-related projects. Third, you have to ensure that there's a clear benefit between what the fee is being applied to and the type of development in the city. And then related to that, ensure that there is a clear impact. If there is new development happening, what is that proportional or relatable impact? And then last is proportionality. So it's important to ensure that new development is not paying for existing development or existing deficiency that the city might have in whatever impact fee you're looking at. So the nexus analysis that was conducted demonstrates how each of the fees that were studied by the consultants were able to meet each of these five criteria. So now that we've set up some of the requirements and methodology, I'm going to go through the individual fees. I will start with the in-loop fees. So the first two, the tree replacement and landscape and loop fees were actually already adopted and went into effect July 1st. But the tree replacement fee is charged in instances where a street or heritage tree is removed and not replaced by the applicant. The landscape and loop fee applies when a tree that is not a street or heritage tree is removed and not replaced. And then in both instances, the fee calculation is just the labor cost and then the cost of the tree itself. So we updated these numbers to more accurately reflect what it's costing the city to replace these various trees. And so then we took a look at the park impacts and in-loop fees. So currently, the city actually has both an impact and an in-loop fee. And it depends on whether parcels are subdivided, which one is charged. So residential projects that require the subdivision of land are assessed a park in lieu or Quimby fee, which is used primarily for land acquisition costs. And those residential projects that do not require subdivision of land are assessed the park impact fee, which can be used for capital-related expenses. which can be used for capital-related expenses, including land, facilities and equipment pertaining to the city's parks infrastructure. The fees are currently set at the same level and they're based on the cost of an acre of land in San Mateo. So another look at the current fee structure, again, the current fees are applicable to residential projects and they are based on the cost of land and the maintenance of the city's parkland acreage standard of two acres per one thousand residents. And so as staff and consultants talked through this current fee structure, it became clear that there were some pretty important drawbacks. First, capital improvement costs are not included as a factor in the fee amount despite development's impacts on park infrastructure. And then second, staff expressed an interest in evaluating the impacts of non-residential projects on the city's park infrastructure. So as I noted, we are only currently charging uh, single-family or multifamily projects for their park, uh, their impact on parks. Several other jurisdictions now charge non-residential projects a park fee based on their proportional impacts and city staff wanted to include that as an option in evaluating what modifications to make to the existing fee structure. So where did that evaluation land? As staff and consultants studied these fees, it became clear that there's no longer a need to have a standalone fee for residential projects that require a subdivision of land. Instead, what staff and consultants are proposing is to combine the park impact and in Luffy's into a single park impact fee that would apply regardless of whether or not a subdivision of land is required. And this new impact fee would account for the full cost of development on the city's park infrastructure, including not only the cost of land to maintain our standard of two acres per one thousand residents, but also identified capital improvement costs. Um, we also expanded the number of land uses included in the nexus study to include commercial and non-residential projects, which I will show you on the next slide. And then lastly, with respect to the park impact fees, the city currently allows developers to request credits against the fee if they provide certain onsite amenities or recreation facilities. Uh, and as a result, many projects do not ultimately end up paying the full park impact fee and that is proposed to continue under the new consolidated fee model as well. So when we took all of those things into account, the cost of land and the two acres per thousand resident standard, as well as the capital improvement costs needed to maintain park and recreation infrastructure, we identified the full cost fees shown here on the slide. So as this table shows, the current fee is not charged on non-residential uses, but this report does establish a nexus between commercial uses and park infrastructure costs due to employee use of park facilities. And so you can see, we are under recovering across the board in terms of what the park infrastructure costs are costing the city with regard to our current residential fee amounts. And given that we are not collecting anything currently for non-residential uses, uh, we are also under collecting uh, for them as well. So as noted earlier, earlier, one of the things that staff and consultants did to help set the context for the fee findings was look at a number of different prototype projects and how San Mateo's current and full cost fees compare with those of surrounding jurisdictions. So a couple of caveats I just want to state upfronts before diving into these graphs first. The next several slides are just showing you the park impacts or community center fees that would be charged on the prototype project. Some jurisdictions charge um, a community center fee instead of a park impact, some charge both, some charge neither. But we're showing, we're applicable, the, the combination of the two or one or the other, depending on what those jurisdictions are charging. That's, it's also just one component of the total development impact fee burden. So just because the city is higher or lower with regard to park impact fees, it does not necessarily mean that these projects will pay more or less in total impact fees when you account for the total breadth of fees to be collected. And so that was one of the things that council looked at when they uh, were comparing our fees to other jurisdictions was the total development fee burden across the board, across all types of development impact fees when looking how we compared to our, our surrounding jurisdictions. And then second, as I mentioned earlier, the city offers credits to developers that provide certain onsite amenities. So developers will often pay less than the fee amount indicated on these slides. This is simply showing you the full cost or the maximum fee amount for these various land use types. So since the next several slides all follow the same format, um, I'll spend just a little bit of time on this slide to orient you to what they're showing. Uh, the title at the top of the slide shows the specifics of the development. So in this case, we're looking at the park impact fees to be charged to a single-family residence that's twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty square feet in size. Each bar represents a jurisdiction and what they would currently charge a project of this type. Uh, the one at the far left shows our current fee and then the second bar from the left shows what our full cost was calculated to be. Uh, we distinguish these two bars with an orange color just to show you where San Mateo uh, is in relation to the other jurisdictions. So on the first chart, you can see that our current park impact fees are roughly twenty-seven thousand dollars for this type of single-family residence, which is below several of our surrounding jurisdictions. But based on the review of our impact fees, the full cost to the city for a single-family residence is actually about thirty-nine thousand dollars, which pushes us above Santa Clara and South San Francisco, but keeps San Mateo well below some others like Millbrae, Mountain View and Palo Alto. So the next development we looked at is a one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-square-foot multifamily project with a hundred-eighty units. In this case, again, the city's current impact fee levels put it below several of the comparison jurisdictions. The full cost amount in this case is higher than the average of the comparison jurisdictions, but still below Millbrae, Palo Alto and Santa Clara. And as I noted earlier, projects are able to apply for a reduction in their park impact fees if they provide certain onsite amenities or recreational facilities. So especially in the case of multifamily uh, developments, they may not pay the full calculated fee amount for the park impact fee that's shown here. Um, and several projects in our development pipeline have indicated an interest in applying for credits towards this fee. Next, we will take a look at a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot retail project. And so as I mentioned earlier, San Mateo does not currently charge non-residential land uses a park impact fee. However, the nexus analysis showed that the city could justifiably charge roughly seven thousand dollars for this type of developments. Uh, and here you can see how that compares to several jurisdictions in the region. Some charge very small or nominal fees for this type of development, while others actually charge a fee that's quite a bit higher than what our calculated maximum amount is. So on this slide, we're looking at a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot office development. Again, this type of project would not pay any park impact fees under the current schedule, but the nexus study indicates it would cost the city roughly seven-hundred-thousand dollars in park-related infrastructure costs. Uh, once again, there's a significant range here between nominal fee levels in some jurisdictions. Uh, and then Palo Alto and San Bruno, who are significantly higher, and then South San Francisco, who's fairly comparable to what our full cost is for this type of project. And then finally, the last prototype we looked at, a sixty-thousand-square-foot hotel with a hundred-and-twenty rooms. Such a project would cost the city roughly seventy-five thousand dollars in park-related capital expenses or would have that impact on the city's park-related capital expenses. And again, you can see San Mateo falls somewhere in the middle versus the comparison, comparison jurisdictions we have included here. So below Palo Alto, San Bruno and South San Francisco, but above Burlingame and Millbrae. And so now we're going to shift gears and talk about some of the feedback we've received from developers, uh, and then from the city council. So first, in May, we held a virtual meeting with several developers to discuss the high-level findings of the studies. And much of the feedback and comments fell into the three buckets that are indicated here. First, there were questions about the timing of the change to the new fee amounts and which projects would be allowed to pay current rates versus revised rates. There were also concerns raised about how these fee increases might impact housing production, particularly in multifamily housing. Uh, and then finally, there was a desire to ensure the new fees were in line with surrounding jurisdictions and feasible for new development in San Mateo. So we brought this, this feedback, uh, and much of the presentation you just saw to council on the seventh of June. And so in terms of what council gave us, uh, as far as direction goes, first, they agreed with the recommendation to consolidate the two existing park fees. So there is one park impact fee that would apply across land use types. And then the second and third points here are related, essentially council expressed a desire to recover as much of the city's costs as possible, which includes beginning to assess the park impact fee on specified non-residential uses. The one exception which staff is currently exploring is looking at ways to incentivize affordable housing production, either through reduced fees or different payment mechanisms as far as the development impact fees are concerned. And then lastly, council directed staff to make changes effective only for those projects that do not already have pre-applications or formal planning applications submitted to the city. So those projects that are already in the pipeline and have submitted those applications would pay rates, uh, pay fees at the existing rate as opposed to these new rates once they go into effect. And that concludes the staff presentation. As Sheila mentioned, uh, we've sort of gotten high-level direction from council at this point um, and are taking their, their guidance and their direction into account and coming back to them in the, the next month or so. I know this is a lot of information to digest, so I am happy to answer any questions or take any comments or feedback that anyone may have.
Okay, thank you, Brian. We will start, Sarah, since you're new, uh, see your hand raised, we will actually, each one of us will go through a period of asking questions. And um, so I will, uh, I'll start with Commissioner Wolnick and we'll work our way around. But we will, Sarah will, will ask questions and then we will also appear to come back and then give our comments and feedback. So Heather, take it away.
Thank you. All right, so I wanted to make sure that the land acquisition is still an allowable use under the proposed consolidated impact fee, is that correct?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, and then also, is there a thought on doing a credit as well on commercial projects? If they include, you know, some sort of recreational facilities in their office complexes or something like that?
Sheila, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that. I think it sounded like something that you might come back to the commission to discuss.
Yeah, I, I mean, we're going, at the same time that this is moving forward, we're going to be taking a look at the entire credit system. And so if there's interest in considering amenities, um, either in commercial buildings or hotels or whatever, we'd certainly want to consider that as we take a look at the entire credit system.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking about um, also types too. I mean, if it's a commercial space that's going to be a gymnastics studio or a yoga studio, it seems kind of odd to then charge them the fee. So I, I think maybe the type of, of business, I don't know if it's known at the time of development, but that might be something to consider as well. Okay, that's it for me tonight.
Okay, great, thanks. Commissioner Mathi.
Yes, uh, thank you. Just a couple of questions. You indicated that the council's uh, guidance included a direction to maximize uh, the cost recover, to recover our costs to the maximum extent possible with an exception made for affordable housing where maybe concessions will be made and I think that's, sounds like that's to be determined later. My question is, um, what did they mean or what did you get out of the, the guidance that you received? Uh, what did they mean when they meant, when they said recover costs to the maximum extent possible? It, it sounds like from the report, and I, I read the, the report, it sounds like we could justify that full cost recovery. Did you take their guidance to mean uh, that the fees should be set for full cost recovery? Or did you get the sense that there are some competing considerations involved in setting the fees? And if so, do you have any sense of what those are?
So I think in general, the guidance was to set the fees at cost recovery, with the exception of some of the affordable housing concerns that I mentioned earlier. I think we sort of proposed or, or provided some guiding questions around, would they rather, would they be interested in setting them at an average of local jurisdictions or the comparison jurisdictions that we provided? And the direction that we received is that, you know, they, there are several sort of long-running projects that they would like to be able to fund. And given that we, we hired consultants to sort of help us figure out what those costs are um, to the city to pay for them, they would like to set the fees at a level that would allow us to, to pay for the infrastructure costs associated with future development. So yes, that was, I guess that was a long way of answering your question that it, the guidance that we got was to set them as close to cost recovery as possible.
Okay, no, that's, that's, that's good. What's the other thing? I, I guess my other, my other question was um, around the, the proposal to extend the, um, the scope of the, of the impact fee to non-residential uses. And for that purpose, it was, it was assumed that um, employees working in, in San Mateo uh, would, would use the parks uh, some three hours a day. Do we have any data to support that?
Yeah, so the way that they came up with that figure is essentially a resident, they essentially treated an employee as about twenty-five percent of a resident in terms of the potential park impact, because they assumed that they would only be able to utilize parks in the hours outside of, of their workday versus a resident who might be able to use it sort of more frequently or throughout the entire day. I, I may need to come back to you with some of the hard data assumptions that they put into that, aside from what was already presented in the, the report. But they did provide, you know, a significant amount of backup information and data uh, in terms of how they came up with that particular twenty-five percent versus a hundred percent calculation.
Okay, all right, thank you, that, that's all I have right now.
There, sorry, I couldn't find the unmute button. Commissioner Hald.
Thank you, um, Brian, just a quick one, not to veer off onto the credits, but what are the, what do we currently offer to developers from a credit standpoint? Can you give me just some examples?
Yeah, I may.
So that's probably, that's probably more in my bailiwick. And I also want to, um, want to acknowledge that Dennis Frank, our um, former park planning administrator, who's kind of the, um, the keeper of all things in Luffy's and San Mateo is also on the call. But in general, uh, we provide credits for things like swimming pools, playgrounds, picnic areas that might include a barbecue, indoor facilities that might be workout or yoga rooms, basketball courts. That's typically the type of thing that we would be providing credits for in a, in a larger development.
Thanks Sheila, that's helpful. Um, and then Brian, I, I read the report to you and I just want to be clear, maybe I misunderstood this. It talked about in the jurisdiction surveyed, only South San Francisco currently charges non-residential park and rec impact fees. Is that correct? I was just curious why, if we learned anything more from what South San Francisco has done?
So there are some other jurisdictions that do charge it. So there were some that were in this comparison presentation. I think Matrix, who did our review of the park impact fee, um, and several of the other fees actually helped South San Francisco revise theirs as well. And so they were intimately involved in that process there. I don't know that I have any insight into, you know, why more jurisdictions are sort of moving that direction aside from the fact that I think they see an opportunity to collect some additional funds that are related to, you know, that are tied to real impacts of those types of projects. But there are some other Bay Area jurisdictions. I think it was a sort of more limited comparison pool in the report as opposed to the presentation.
Okay, that was helpful. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, uh, next up, Commissioner Fields.
Thank you Chair Holm. I, like Commissioner Hald, had some questions about the credits and I'm curious. Thank you for those examples Sheila and thank you for your presentation, Brian. Can you speak to sort of the accessibility of those amenities that are given credit? Are they publicly accessible amenities? Or are they for residents only of, of these multifamily buildings? How does, how does it work that they, that these credits are given?
So it can be a combination of both. So typically something like a swimming pool or a, it obviously indoor facilities, it might be a yoga studio or things like that would really only be accessible to residents. In some areas, and I'm thinking of the Station Park Green um, project, for example, they provided a very large green. they provided a very large green infrastructure inside their development that met the requirements for turf area. That is both accessible to their residents as well as to non, to people who don't live there. So I think a lot will would depend upon the type of facility. Also, if it's a basketball court that might be stuck in the middle of a courtyard area, that's probably not going to be accessible to the public. Whereas if they had a basketball court out in the middle of the Station Park Green, for example, that very well could be accessible to the public. So it can be both.
Okay. I would suggest that we should prioritize public publicly accessible amenities. And then Brian, can you expand on what kind of affordable housing credit is being considered?
Yeah, so at this point, it's still sort of a thirty thousand foot level. There was a desire to sort of look at what our legal options are with regard to either subsidizing or creating some sort of alternative payment mechanism like a fee deferral. And so we're currently working with the city attorney's office and our consultants to sort of figure out what that could look like and come back to council with some, some options.
Okay, great. Well, keep us prized of any updates and information there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Phelps. So similar to the questions Commissioner Phelps had regarding the private amenities that are given to sort of credit, is it, is it a one for one cost credit on that? So I'm a developer and I build a pool and I I would normally be spending seven million dollars in fees for my development and I spend five hundred thousand dollars on a pool. Does that mean I only owe five hundred thousand dollars in fees to the park in Lufy or or is it some prorated amount of some sort?
So it's a percentage amount. It is not a dollar for dollar based upon construction. And Dennis, I don't know if you might be able to provide, it's actually a fairly complex formula based on percentages. So I don't know, Dennis, if if you can provide a a short answer without getting into all the details.
Here I am, okay. I think it is a percentage base basis. We basically figure out what the fee would, how many acres. Well, I'm I'm going off the current fee right now, the way we we established the 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 credits. We take the a number of units, we multiply it by some data that's number of people per unit based on whether it's multifamily or single family. There's two divisions in multifamily, one to two to four units and one above four. And each has a number of people per unit based on that distribution. And so we figure out, we apply, we figure out the population of the development. And then we apply two acres per thousand people to that to get the amount of acres that they're required to basically dedicate. That's the way the current system is set up. And then in order to achieve credit, you need to provide public amenities or rather amenity park and recreational space that equates to at least twenty five percent of the of the the amount of acreage, your, the land dedication acreage that you're supposed to provide. And so, and then, then it's just based off a percentage basis from there. And then the maximum you can get is fifty percent credit. And we would so that's the, that's whatever we end up with, credit wise, we would multiply it by fifty percent. So it's a little complicated, but that's kind of how you do it.
Thank you, Dennis. Additionally, you, the report talked about credits in terms of, like, if you're an apartment building, that's a ten unit apartment complex and you tore it down and built a fifteen year complex, then you'd only have to pay for five units. But then it had a little bit of a clarification that said, but that's only if the apartment complex had previously paid a park and loo fee in its history. I I imagine that, you know, some built, some apartments built in the, I don't know, some year thirties, forties, fifties, somewhere in time that these fees didn't exist. Is that the case or has everything built in our city previously paid a park and loo fee, both residential and and both single family and multifamily residential?
No, not even, no, the the ordinance is coming into effect and I think back in the mid seventies or something like that. So there's, there's definitely development in here before that, residential development. We we give credit off of any, any existing units. No matter if they paid fees or not.
Okay. The report I thought said that it was only if they had paid fees.
Yeah, I don't know.
I will need to double check that. I don't know if the the report made a recommendation to that effect, but I I will have to go back and look and see.
Okay. And similarly to fees, so how is this proposed new workplace or commercial fee going to be implemented? If I'm, if I want to start a restaurant downtown, I mean, obviously, none of these spaces have paid a fee before. So if I want to start a restaurant downtown and I take over a space that used to be a restaurant, but I go down and apply for my new building permit to modify it, do I then now have to pay this restaurant fee because I'm now starting a restaurant today versus if I started one yesterday?
Yeah, so I think, I think that's some of what needs to be untangled still. But the the basic direction from council is if you currently have a planning application that's submitted to the city, you basically wouldn't be paying this fee. Like, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to charge them a park fee if we, we can't currently charge it to them and they already have a planning application in. So if somebody comes in, you know, six months from now, when the fees are in effect, they would then be subject to paying the fees versus somebody who had sort of gone through and put themselves into the development pipeline earlier this year or prior to sort of council direction on this topic. So there will be a cutoff period where, you know, if you had, if you decided to build a restaurant or a commercial use that sort of is now subject to this fee, you wouldn't have had to pay it before, but past a certain date, you would, you would then have to pay it.
Okay, I mean, and it's not like it's a multi-year cutoff. It's, it's like a, you know, whenever this goes into effect in the next six months or year or something, it's sort of like, if you're in the pipeline before then or not, that's, that's your cutoff.
We did ask, we did ask if there was appetite for phasing in the fees or or phasing in changes or increases and it, there was not really an appetite for that. It was more, we'd like to be recovering our costs, you know. These are our costs now, so we would like to be recovering them as soon as we can.
Okay. To my last question about the development and and how credits are applied, it's on the draft report. Item three, page seven, it says, the credit is only applied if the existing facility had already paid into impact fees. If the existing development had not paid any impact fees, there would be no credit applicable. So I think that needs to be clarified, because there is a, and I'm I'm drifting a little bit into the comment section that we'll get to after, after public comment. But I'm, I'm similar to the restaurant issue that I proposed that, you know, I started after this or 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 before this, I think. In a development standpoint, you've got two apartment buildings next to each other, based on the language in this. And, you know, I'm a developer and I go, okay, I'm going to buy, I'm going to buy this development, this apartment building and then the department building next door to me, Commissioner Mathi buys and we both decide, you know, they're both two unit apartments and I, and we both add five units to them. Commissioner Mathi pays for five units and and I pay for fifteen units because of the, the the past history. So I think that that really needs to be clarified. Because there is a, I mean, this is, this is not something that would normally come up in a due diligence of, of I'm going to buy an apartment building and renovated or something, nor would I expect this to come up for a business owner looking to start a restaurant downtown or a shop downtown or whatever.
Could I, could I respond to that real quickly? I just pulled up the report. So it looks like the section you're referencing is sort of, they're mentioning typically, in many cases, that's how cities set it up. It sounds like from what Dennis said is that we've traditionally basically given credit to existing uses whether they've paid or not. And I think that's probably something that, you know, as, as Sheila talks to you about the credit issue, perhaps that's something also that you know, there might be direction provided from this commission or additional direction from council.
Okay.
Yeah, it's part of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Currently.
Good.
They'll give credit for existing units.
Okay. It's similar to the credits for providing amenities on your property. If you're a residential property, can you get a single family residential property? Can you get credit for your exterior landscape space that is, you know, recreation space on a residential property?
We supposed to get, our credits are basically based on park and recreational facility credits. So emphasized facility, so just normal landscaping. No, we don't give credit for just typical landscaping and if it's a lawn area, it has to be of some function, of some minimum size. We have a whole list of items that we give credit for. And there's a minimum size and there's also a maximum size per, per, per amount of people per unit.
Okay. Then to the notion of the fee for businesses and the question that Commissioner Mathi had about, you know, a study of business or 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 employees using parks. I will say that when I worked in San Mateo, myself and many of you in my office would take lunch in the parks and and or people would go run or do that. So I I do understand that there's a precedent for the use of the facilities. But the, the question I wonder, apart from hotel users, which are not from the area completely, if, if I'm an employee, so I live in San Mateo and I work in Palo Alto right now. And if someone else lives in Palo Alto and works in San Mateo, we're charging their business for their use of the park, but at the same time, I'm not using the park because I'm down in Palo Alto. And so, in effect, aren't we double charging people? Or when I did live in San Mateo and and work in San Mateo, you know, if we were charging my employer or that business, I would, we would be effectively double charging for someone. Because, you know, many of our residents are either working in San Mateo, in which case we're double charging, or they're working in other cities, in which case they're not using the parks when they're in their other cities. So it, it seems like sort of a double counting of, of sorts.
So I'd say to that, to that point, one of the ways that we sort of distinguish between the residents and the and the employees, in addition to the point I made earlier about the hours that they're available to use the parks, is the fact that we can only charge the residents for the land use and the additional acreage amount. So if you are a resident here and it's a residential use, then we would charge for the two acres per resident or per thousand residents because that is sort of what our, our standard is. We don't have a standard for employees. So for those commercial uses, the reason that they are significantly lower in terms of the fee amounts is not only because they have less time to spend in the parks, but they're also not being charged the land cost amounts that are associated with our residential two per thousand acre, basically parkland standard.
So does the, does the commercial dollars generated from commercial fees then not, because we're combining this into one fee from before, how it was two fees or or different classifications? Is this effectively a different classification for commercial that it can't be used for acquisition of land then? It can only be used for park facility improvements?
Yeah, so essentially on the back end, there'll need to be some accounting for how we use, we use the funding that comes from residential versus from commercial.
Okay. And then lastly, a quick question on the trees. We just went through the whole tree ordinance update and worked with Matt and and increased the fees for heritage trees and and that was based on the cost recovery in a lot of studies. And then it looks like we're now recommending raising the fees again, so. Do I understand that incorrectly, Sheila?
Yeah, I think, I think Brian indicated that those fees for trees were already adopted in the city's fee manual. So no, we're not recommending any changes for trees.
Okay, great. Then, okay.
But I I would like to maybe ask Brian make a clarification because I've heard a couple of commissioners talk about these fees as more of a business fee rather than a development fee. And so my understanding, and so I'm looking to Brian, because correct me if I'm wrong, but these fees apply at the time that buildings are constructed, correct, correct, Brian?
Correct, when we issue the building permit.
So it's not when a restaurant changes operation from
So, so this would be new construction, so not like a restaurant goes and changes, changes from one restaurant to the other or or there's a younger studio that they turn into a restaurant. That's still an existing space, so this is on new square footage that's built in.
Correct.
Correct.
Sorry, I think I misunderstood your question. But yeah, that's, thank you for that clarification, Sheila.
I hadn't actually had that question as clearly thought through in my head, so I thank Sheila for recognizing that.
Well, I I heard a couple of things and I'm thinking, I wonder, I hope they're not thinking of this as a, some sort of business tax on any time a, a business comes in for a business license that somehow we're going to be putting a park, a park impact fee on them. So it really is construction related activity.
Okay, no, that's definitely how I how I incorrectly interpreted it. So I appreciate that clarification.
Thanks.
Okay, that is all my questions for now. We will open up to public comments. I'm seeing no attendees, Giovanna, I, correct me if I'm wrong. But I don't think we have anyone from the public.
You are correct, Chair Holm. There is nobody from the public.
So with that, I will turn back over to Commissioner comments. And just to also, Sheila or Brian frame this, you, basically, you guys are taking our comments and and reporting back to council after this, right? Is that, is that the process here?
Yeah, essentially, we will be returning to council with further, you know, responses to their guidance, whether that's a recommendation for fee amounts and then timeline. But yes, if you have comments that are, that are, you know, pertaining to the park impact changes, we will bring those back to council at that time.
Okay. And so Sarah, for a timer for you at this point, you know, this would be your chance to say things you don't like about it, but also things that you support about it, you know, and just to
Understand.
overall feedback about that. So Commissioner Wolnick, I'll start with you.
Thanks. All right, let's see here. So if I'm understanding correctly about the credits, Sheila, we're going to be seeing that again. Is that correct? There's some larger study, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I I think just the, the follow up really is, is that once we get council direction, the entire park in Lufy ordinance has to be rewritten. So it'll, it's going to take some time to do that. And in the, during sort of on a parallel track, we'll be looking at our current credit system and whether or not that needs revisement based upon, you know, some experience that we're, we're seeing. And certainly consider what sort of credit system we would or would not want to recommend for commercial type uses.
Okay, thanks. On the commercial side, I think one thing that kind of struck me is that it's a, it's a square footage calculation. I don't necessarily understand how that factors in the different businesses that could go into a space. I mean, an office building, for example, would have a lot more employees, so therefore a lot more impacts. However, some space that's like, like a yoga studio, for example, is going to have bigger space and fewer employees. So I think that maybe that part needs just a bit of thought and I don't know if that's like a, almost a delayed assessment when you collect, because I don't know when someone comes in, in the, for the planning application. for the planning application. Um, they necessarily know exactly what businesses are going to be involved, but I think that that maybe needs a little more thought there. Um, and maybe office buildings is a simple calculation and could be its own category um on the commercial side. Um, and then, let's see. Um, so I I'm not, what what exactly is pre-planning application versus the formal application? Um, we're talking about the cutoff for implementing this being basically a pre-application process. So so what's the difference there?
So certain types of large planning applications have to go through basically what is a a pre-application process where they work with the city to sort of iron out some of the details of their plan early on um and get city feedback on what will ultimately be their their project. So it's mostly larger types of development. Um, so those um those projects plus anything that maybe has gotten past that stage or wasn't subject to going through a a pre-application process. Anything that that is currently in pre-application has passed through pre-app- pre-application and is that the regular application process? Or is just starting the regular application process would sort of be captured in that existing um pipeline that would be subject to the current fees as opposed to the revised increase.
Okay, so is that pre-application pressure process for those larger buildings? Is that lengthy and burdensome on them? I mean, is that the thinking on why we're not moving the line to the actual application?
Yeah, so it depends on the project. I mean, in many cases, if you're in a pre-application project, um, you have a large, it's a large development, you've probably been working on it for a few years. You've been putting your financials together. And so I think council's response to that was it would be a little bit unfair to move the goalposts on those larger projects halfway through or after they've sort of spent a significant amount of time working with staff and with investors on putting that together.
Okay. Um, okay, so I would like to, I guess, second the half comment that um Sarah made already. I'm sure she's gonna expand on it, but just that we somehow focus on having more publicly accessible space, if that's possible here. Um, I think that's something our city is gonna get, is gonna be a big challenge for us going forward with all the development um that is in the pipe works and potentially happening with the general plan possibilities. Um, I I think that's that's really important um to not just, you know, not lose sight of of where we are on the public, public spaces. Um, with that, I I support the the combination. I think that makes a lot of sense of just having one fee. Um, and I I don't, I don't see any any issues with the numbers that concern me. I think um I think it is important to go kind of as high as we can without um losing the development, because they are, these are real impacts. I think we shouldn't lose sight of that, that we're not just kind of like trying to make a profit for the city, that we really are trying to build um spaces and make our parks better for the people that will be here and will use it. So I I think we we should be emphasizing that, that that this is not a money grab by the city. It's it's paying for things that we need um and that are related to to what these fees are being assessed for. So thank you very much for for the presentation too. It was, it did clarify a lot of of a lot of uh very detailed information. So thanks, Brian. That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Wallnick. Uh, Commissioner Matthew.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Um, yes, I want to support Commissioner Walnick's comments. I um favor the the approach that's being taken both in the report and um the the guidance that you're receiving from the council and that we're going to be hearing more about, I I know as we go forward. Um, and her her comments with respect to um to the effect that we're not out to gouge developers. We have a letter from a developer which we were asked to take a look at kind of at the last minute here. And there's a there's a certain tone that goes along with that of, well, you know, you're 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 just kind of out to gouge the developers. And the fact of the matter is, your the the your study that with the uh help of the consultants has indicated that the city has has been under recovering these costs now for a number of years and um, you know, there there are certainly issues around comparison to competing jurisdictions and uh questions of whether one or another development might go forward or not um based on on these fees that really aren't within our purview. Um, but uh based on on the guidance that the council is giving on this, I I I'm I'm supportive. I think that that is what what we should be doing and and that they're really solid and important reasons for doing that. Um, just on the on the point of around the cutoff that Commissioner Wallack was discussing, um, isn't, as I recall, I mean, this is, this is, this issue of fee changes and all of that uh is something that has come up in the past. And as I recall, there's a pretty standard approach to that's taken to uh what point is a new regime going to affect a particular development? And I thought there's a standard of uh had has a pre-application been filed or not. That was pretty standard across the board, isn't it?
I know that we've used it in the past when we've made updates. Well, for example, when we uh implemented our commercial linkage fee in the city, we we followed a similar timeline. And certainly, cities have the ability to be more strict or to ramp up more quickly. Um, but councils sort of has has given us the same direction in the past.
Yeah, so so in other words, this is, this is not something that's just been sort of plucked out of the air. This is, this is following precedent that um at least developers that have been around us for in the past would be familiar with. Okay, um. I think we're going to have a robust discussion around the credit program. Um, and I I think it doesn't appear really to be on the agenda for tonight either. But I was curious, um, has thought been given to a cutoff for possible changes in the credit program? Um. Would would that also be based upon uh a project either be in pre-application mode or not? And if that's the case, if I don't know whether a change in the credit program would be uh so integrated with changes in the fee program that we do the whole thing at once, or whether it's possible that changes in the credit program could lag adoption of new fees. And if that's the case, I mean, how would we ha- how would you handle the cutoff?
So I'm not sure that we've um thought that far ahead, to be honest with you. I mean, I think I think we were assuming that they would probably go on parallel tracks um at, you know, and that they would be changed relatively close to each other. And I would think that whatever um parameter is being used for the fees would also be used for the credits. Um, so projects that are in pre-application, um, and if they've already come up with a plan that has a swimming pool and a, you know, basketball court and whatever, um, that those would continue to be honored. So um, I think it's a, I think it's a good discussion. Um, and again, I'll be honest with you and say I'm not sure we thought that far ahead.
Okay, no, that's 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 fair enough. Um, I I've probably said enough. The one thing that Commissioner Wallack had brought up, which I think is worth loo- looking into, and that is whether there should be some um, I guess, more more detailed or or uh approach to determining uh the charges to non-residential act uh construction based on the type of business that we're talking about. I I don't really have a sense of of whether that is a good idea or not, but I think maybe it's something it should be thought about. In other words, instead of just saying, okay, well, we're going to charge so much per square foot, um, is these the, should we be taking into account the uh disparate impact of a X square feet of office use where you've got people crammed into the infamous long tables and all of that in a room versus uh something like um I don't know, a yoga studio or something that which doesn't have that many employees and uses a lot of space. I don't know what the answer is to that, but it may be something you should think about.
I clarified that in the the previous point about differentiating different non-residential uses. The report does differentiate between certain types of uses like office versus retail, and it uses sort of a employee per square foot factor. So it does sort of suss out the difference between something that might be a more dense land use in terms of the number of employees per square foot versus something that has fewer employees uh in its footprint.
Okay, no, no, that that that's good. That's good. And and, you know, I think obviously, it's something that's of interest to us from the park's perspective, but presumably um, that would be an approach that's going to be used for all the fees. In other words, you so not entirely in 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 our uh our control here or I think that's what I have, what I've got here.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hell.
Yep, uh, Brian, thank you for this. This is a super thoughtful presentation and report um and was was very, was very useful. And I would would echo what Commissioners Wallnick and Massey said. I I agree with them. I think this is, it's thoughtful. It's a common sense approach to consolidate um the fees and to recover as much as possible with the exception of affordable housing. And I would just reiterate, much like the council, that we should be be cautious there and and do that smartly. Um, and again, it just makes sense to be on par with with other jurisdictions, and I agree with that as well. Um, I would love also to follow along with the credits. I think that's an important but uh but separate conversation. And uh and Sheila, one thing that jumped out to me too is just this acreage standard. Again, not a conversation for tonight, but the notion of having to find, I think, forty six acres over the next twenty years um jumped out at me. And then I'm I'm curious separately, kind of where we're where we're headed in that direction. But um, I know this this makes sense and I I support it.
I I can just make a comment. I think there has been certainly Dennis recalls discussion over the time of raising the standard from two acres to three acres per thousand. Um, we but remember that that then initiates an increase in the level of fees. And so the question is, if we're changing the fee structure, do we now want to add on the burden of additional one acre that people are currently not paying for? And where will that raise the level of fees? Um, so I think it's something to take a look at. Um, but the whole notion of two acres per thousand has been around for a number of years. I think we've raised it in the past, and I think that uh we've not gotten support for it simply because of the monetary impact it would cause.
Got it.
But well, we're certainly happy to take a look at it again.
Oh, yeah, no, that's that's helpful. Thank you.
You're gonna need double decker parks pretty soon. Um, all right, Commissioner Phil.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just, I want to say that I think that the impact restructuring, uh, the rather the impact fee restructuring is the reasonable move. Um, you know, we should be recouping the full cost to the city, especially right now. Um, you know, our sources of revenue have declined um in a variety of areas, and this is an area to recoup some of those costs. And frankly, the fact that some of the other cities around San Mateo County don't do this or don't do this at the same level um really shouldn't impact us. Um, it's an opportunity for us to lead and to give example, and I'm sure once we do it, other cities will follow. Um, the other thing I want to say, and and obviously, there's a bigger conversation here around credits, but I do think we really have an obligation to use these impact fees for the public good. And I think there's opportunity to think creatively here, whether it's in some of those examples that were given where there's sort of more private facing space. Are there are there opportunities to say with a basketball court to open it for a few hours a day for the general public? Or to have a partnership with some of the schools in the area or something like that. Um, I I would like to see thinking creatively, so it's not just amenities for residents and a credit to a developer that feels um like it's within sort of the constraints of of the idea, but not really within the spirit of the idea. And so I really want to honor that as we move forward into thinking about credits. Um, the other thing that um Commissioner Hell brought up, um, the two acres per one thousand standard, I would also suggest that we could consider a geographic standard at some point in the future, that everyone be within uh an accessible walking distance of a park, um, which I I know is a different standard, but also as as frankly, a space is so scarce. Um, you know, if we're, if we build in in sort of mid-density um locations, people can be close to a park and be served by it well. Um, and we can play with the standard a little bit. So I I want to encourage some flexibility on that standard, um, because as long as we have geographic closeness to a park, I think I think we're serving the community well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll I'll immediately piggyback on that comment that I I really appreciate that notion. And I I know we're not really talking about changing the standard of density. Um, but uh the notion of of also having some sort of description about geographic is is a really interesting one, because it makes pocket park a um a more viable or um or at least a one of the tools in the park uh network um at a greater rate than trying to amalgamate large swaths of land that you sort of are are getting a diversity of park type facilities. Um, but uh otherwise, my comments, I'm gonna, I'm gonna contradict myself a little bit in my comments, both in favor and against the fees. So uh, you know, bear with me on that. Um, I uh, I'm I the I'm I'm really encouraged to see this study go through. Uh, Sheila will know that every year when we revise it, she'll recall. As long as I've been at the commission, it's been my my soapbox. Um, but I and and I I might just be whistling in the wind here because um, I I have always felt that the the structure is is inverted and it's not, doesn't accurately reflect um the cost or the use basis in that um I think single family residences use the parks less than a multifamily five plus units, because there is the sort of large scale recreation facilities of pools and and baseball fields and and whatnot. Um, tennis courts that 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 only a park can serve. But there's also the um meeting people outdoors for lunch or just sitting in nature that uh does not exist in a lot of multifamily units. But if you have a residential house, uh, you have a yard and you could be perfectly fine going all through COVID, never going to a park uh because you've got a backyard kind of thing. Um, and and the notion of the the two acres per thousand, that's eighty seven square feet per person. Uh, so a a residential house of four people could have uh three hundred square feet of of park-like amenities, either a swimming pool in their backyard or even just a three hundred, four hundred square foot patch of of lawn. Um, I think uh is is equally as valuable as the developer that's building a private uh accessible park amenity to just their complex. Uh, so so I would say that if you're going to allow credit for developers that have private facilities, then you also should allow a residential, single family to have credits for their private green space uh to the same extent. Uh, now, I realize that could just be all moot, because really, how many people are dividing land into a single family house? Uh, but it's just the principle of it that's just bothered me for the entire time I've been on the on the commission, and we look at these every year. Um, and and then additionally, um, you know, I I do recognize the the developers letter and their comments of of, you know, you're killing us with costs, so to speak. Um, and I um, I kind of, um, I mean, there's there's a difference. Um, I kind of look at it different depending on the number of units, and you're doing a multifamily, multiple units. You have different economies of scale and and whatnot and different, and it's a development and there's there's big uh, there's a different sort of financial structure in there. But on a smaller scale, um, you're looking at uh a pretty significant added cost, not just for the parking lot, but all of the fees in the study. Um, you know, I I looked at just the single family residence. You know, I, I looked at just the single-family residents and, and looked at cost per square foot. And, and you're looking at like a five percent cost burden just for fees for, for a, a house, which is, which is not as significant. Because that's also not counting all of the. Planning fees and. Permitting fees and, and all of the other fees that are involved in just constructing. And the whole point behind the state ADU laws was that cities have been. Imposing fees that are so exorbitant that they're killing construction. Everywhere the state. So this isn't necessarily a, a San Mateo specific comment. But I, it is something that I'm, I'm both, on one hand, I'm arguing that, that the multifamily should be paying a lot more. On the other hand, I'm saying it's, it's too much. So I don't know how to reconcile that in my own mind. But, but those are just my, my conflicting thoughts. I, I would like to echo what several of my commissioners mentioned about if you have a development and making. Credits that it's, that it should be publicly accessible. I, I. I can imagine, you know, in San Francisco, they have similar programs where these large office buildings have. Park-like spaces and they're required to be open to the public and they have to have a plaque. On the building that says, you know, such and such plaza on the fourth floor, twentieth floor, whatever is open to the public. And those are kind of, you know, they're hidden spaces that really are like ninety-nine percent used by the employees. But it is also a nice thing that if you're going to get credit against development, that it, it is open to the public. And I think about the tech campus campuses that have come in and, and, you know, with the. Our public comments in the skateboarders that we've heard. Over time here, they've indicated that the Facebook Oculus building that was built in, in, over Bay Shore, Burlingame. Has like the best skateboard outside area, and I don't even know if Facebook Oculus wants that. Was that, that was the intention or if it's, or if it's them just renegade appropriating the space. But I also compare that to Facebook campus in Menlo Park, which is quite famous for their entire rooftop. Outdoor space, but that's closed entirely to, to employees. And, and it's an amazing, beautiful space. But if you had a, that, you know, that similar type of model, you can see the, the difference. And that's in the same company, just building two different buildings where one thing maybe unintentionally has become a public use space. But if we're giving credits, there's a much greater benefit to the community for something that's accessible by the public. And then. For the notion of affordable housing. I would also, just as a suggestion. Pose that, that if we are saying that you only get credits for a public. Amenity that's open to public, you could also say that affordable housing is a public amenity. In a, in a bigger picture type of thing, and that that would be a framework for with, within which you could provide credits. Against this for affordable units of X dollars amount per unit or something. As, as that that's a important public amenity, the fabric of a city to have a broad range of housing typologies. So. That would be. One suggestion and/or, or, or framework to, to look at that. Otherwise, I thank you for this report. It's, it's been something that I've been eager for, for, for several years. And that's it. And, and I don't know, Commissioners, if you have any other final parting comments? Okay, Sheila?
No, I, I was gonna say, I know that every year for, I think, the last two years, whenever we brought the fee changes to you, I've always. Begged off and said, hey, this citywide fee, impact fee study is coming, and I'm so glad that it's finally here. Because I know, I know I've mentioned it the last couple of years, when I know several of you have brought up potential changes. And I, again, I've sort of begged off and said, this is part of a larger citywide study, so. Thank you Commissioners for your patience. And thank you again, Brian. You've done a great job. It's not an easy subject to get through. Our portion was only one of many. When you talk about transportation impact fees and childcare and all those kinds of things. So I really want to express our appreciation to Brian for a great job he's done in shepherding this project. So thank you very much.
Of course, thank you all. Thank you. So with that, I think we close this item and go on to new business, which is the election of officers. And, you know, we have a, a little bit, you know, we, we essentially do a sort of rotation. Our deputy chair or vice chair rather. Was the, was the one that, that resigned during the year. So we are without a vice chair. So tonight we'll be nominating both the chair and a vice chair. In the absence of one, and we've got. Commissioner Feld, who is our first meeting, so I don't think she wants to be the chair right away. And Commissioner.
It's a big assumption. You don't know.
And Commissioner Hells is still just new on the commission. So I, I would actually start with a nomination. Commissioner Wallenick was our, was our. Past chair last year, and so I would actually nominate Commissioner Massey for chair and Commissioner Hells for vice chair.
Yeah, I'd, I'd second that. I think that makes sense.
Okay. And Commissioner Massey or Commissioner Hells, unless you want to decline the nomination, I think we'll move to a vote.
Okay.
Okay, Giovanna, can you do a vote?
Yes, just to confirm, are we doing both the, the votes together?
Do we need to do them separate, Sheila, or can we just do them together?
I think if you were talking to the city clerk, she'd probably say you have to do them separate.
Okay, let's, then, then I'll nominate Commissioner Massey for the chair.
And I'll second.
And we'll go for a vote.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallenick?
Aye.
Commissioner Hells?
Aye.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Thank you.
I don't think you asked Chris if, what his vote was, did you?
No, but I wasn't, I didn't know whether that was part of the tradition.
No, I think you can vote for yourself.
Aye.
Commissioner Massey?
Okay, and I'll, I'll nominate Commissioner Hells for vice chair.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Massey?
Aye.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallenick?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hells?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will move to reports and announcements.
So just a couple of things. First, first off, we had a wonderful kickoff to our summer concert series this last Sunday on July fourth. I know Commissioner Wallenick was there. I don't know if any of the other ones, other commissioners were there, but we had a really nice turnout. It was nice to see people back in the park. We had a great band. We had an opportunity to have several local Marines raise the flag as part of the ceremony. And then Mayor Rodriguez did a nice recognition of local essential workers. Who worked throughout COVID. So it was a really nice celebration. Great afternoon. We will continue with four summer concerts, starting not this Thursday, but a week from Thursday. And so we're doing a bit of a modified schedule. Only because at the time that we started having to make planning preparations, we really didn't know the conditions under which we were able. To, to operate. So please come out to any of those on a Thursday night from six to eight inside Central Park. Our summer program is, is going extremely well. I just made a report earlier today to our city manager in terms of our summer programs. To date, we have collected about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue for registered classes. If we compare that with the entire summer of two thousand nineteen, we'll leave out two thousand and twenty. But in two thousand nineteen, we collected one point one million. So really, we're not that far behind, given the fact that we don't currently have a lot of adult programs up and operating. So I think we believe that by September, by the fall session, we'll be back in operation. Pretty much without, without any restrictions. To that extent, we are opening our senior center this week for programming, a limited amount of program. And so I know that we don't talk a lot about seniors here because we do have a senior commission, but. It's an important component of all of the activities and the programs that we do. And seniors are very, very anxious to get back into seeing each other and having activities together. So. We'll be doing some limited program starting this week, and again, probably in our fall program, we'll be having more activities. So it's been a busy summer for us. And so I think with that, those are, were the only announcements that I had on behalf of staff.
So, so Sheila, that's, that's fantastic news. Is that, that's just the summer program? So that's not things like you previously reported that the golf course was, was the big moneymaker during all of this? Because it was the only thing that could be opened. So that's just your, just your summer catalog?
Correct. That's just summer registered programs, so it does not include things like picnic reservations. Where now, I mean, as soon as we opened up our picnic reservations, we were getting literally dozens of calls a day for picnic. So the amount, the number that I quoted you is only registered activities, not, not the golf course or not reservations for facilities.
Great. So, so I assume that all of your other reservations are, are far exceeding what we've had in past years. On a, basically from when they've been open to now by comparison.
Certainly, I can say for last year, I'd have to go back and look at two thousand nineteen. But, but a lot of our areas are, larger picnic areas are pretty much full every weekend.
Fantastic. Any other announcements or crystal ball items?
Not, not unless anyone had, oh, I, I just wanted to mention tomorrow, we were, are opening bids for Burrell Park. And so. We'll wait and see what the final number comes in at. Our plan is to take it to council, city council for award of contract in August and then begin construction in early September.
And, and Burrell Park's the one right above the school between the fire station?
Correct.
Great.
So certainly for that neighborhood that doesn't have a lot of park space that's close by, it will be a welcome addition. To that, to that neighborhood as well. So we're very excited to start construction on that project in September.
Sheila, will, selfishly, will that include a playground or is that just a?
No, it will include a playground.
Oh, fantastic.
Is that your neighborhood?
It is. Yeah, we need more. That's great.
Great.
That was all I had.
Before we, before we go, I, I wanted to make sure to say, and I'm sure I can speak on behalf of the rest of the commission. With this, to thank Eric for his services chair over the last year. This has been a really tough time, every single meeting on Zoom. And lots of handling outside comments and, and. Keeping things moving and, and keeping us all muted when we're supposed to be and unmuted when we're supposed to be. So, thank you. You, I am feeling like you are a tough act to follow, and I'm gonna do the best I can. I also had a couple of questions just quickly here. One of them is, I noticed on the crystal ball, we, as of now, there don't seem to be any. Agenda items for August or September. Is that kind of where we're at or, or is Sheila, you're thinking maybe there's some things that might be coming along in that timeframe?
I can say with certainty that September, we will be bringing the preferred alternative for the Central Park Playground design. And we've had a lot of community input. We had a virtual meeting, we had an onsite meeting, we've had surveys. And so I think the response from the community of the two alternatives that we had was pretty overwhelming. For Adventure, Adventure Village. So that'll be the one, they're working on the refinement. So we hope to bring that to you all in September. It is highly likely that we will have an item for August. It's just still in the pipeline right now.
Okay. And the second question is, what are the prospects of our next meeting being in person?
So we're taking the lead from our city clerk's office in terms of moving in that direction. It is possible that, that the August meeting could be in person. I think the question that is still being out, being talked about is, you know. Will they allow commissioners to remain virtual and have some onsite? And if so, you know, do you have a majority onsite and two on virtual? So I think they're still trying to work that out. It's so, it's possible, Chris, that it could be August. I would say probably with more certainty, it would be September.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll just see how this goes. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Chris, I'll, I'll say the trick is to have multiple screens, so you can have everything up all at once. Or, or print it out ahead of time. Sheila had a question, we, you know, when we did the capital improvement.
Eric, before you ask your question, I have to go. My kids have been alone for this whole time, so I gotta go check in. So thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
When we did the capital improvement plan, Sunnybury Park was one that was in this year's budget. But I can't remember what significance it was. Was it design of it? Was it? Where was it in that?
It's really, it was just starting to put away money for it.
Okay.
You know, from a, from a project priority standpoint right now, it's going to be getting Burrell constructed. Getting the preferred design for the Central Park Playground and then finishing the design for East Hillsdale.
So it's, Sunnybury is like three or four years out before you'd be seeing construction?
I, I would think maybe in the three-year range.
Okay. And then also for in-person versus Zoom meetings, I think. If we do, if we are in-person, having the ability for the public to be in via Zoom, I think is, is phenomenal. I, I don't think we would have gotten the level of public encouragement or public participation rather. For in-person, I think it's a lot harder, and that's something that, both on the city council side and then it's just in our, in our commission, I, I value. That, that increased ease of access for the public. And I think that's one of the silver linings coming out of all of this. That, that that is something we never thought possible and has actually worked quite well.
And, and I think the, certainly I know from the council perspective that they do very much intend. To keep virtual people call-in attendance for comments.
Okay. Well, with that, if there's no other questions or comments, we will close the meeting. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you all. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.